Good evening and welcome to the regularly scheduled Claussen City Council meeting of June 19th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation by Mayor Proton Matt Albrecht.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pray. Dear God, we come before you this evening asking that you would grant your wisdom to us this evening and generally to those who work for this city. I ask for your safety for the first responders in this city and across our nation, and I thank you for their efforts. I ask that you would grant our community that we may flourish in every way, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Woolley.
Here.
Councilmember Aris.
Here.
Councilmember Milan.
Here.
Councilmember Moffett.
Here.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Here.
The first item on the agenda is a consideration of approving the following consent agenda. What's on the consent agenda this time is the minutes of the regularly city council meeting held on Tuesday, June 5th, and the reappointment of Claire Mann to the Blair Memorial Library Board for a term to expire July 1st, 2023. May I move the consent agenda be approved as listed?
Support.
Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Aris.
Yes.
Councilmember Milan.
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett.
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Yes.
Mayor Woolley. Yes. And the motion carries. The next item on the agenda is recognition of service awards to selected city employees. We have quite a list of individuals that have committed a long time and a lot of hard work to the city, and I'd like to read their names. Ray Butch Vincent with the DPW has been with the city for 35 years. Dave Ulette, who takes care of our cable and TV, has been with the city for 30 years. Troy Engel with the Fire Department, Jennifer Ginnad from the library, and Michael Companion from the library have all been with us for 20 years. 15 years for Jason Rans with the Police Department, Sergeant David Scott with the Police Department, and Robert Smith with the Senior Citizens Department. Christina Carter with the library has been here, has been with us 10 years. The Senior Citizen Department has Stella Chisholm, who's been here for 10 years. Mitch Hollingsworth with the DPW, Neil Johnson with the Fire Department, Eric Knack with the Fire Department, Virginia Shirley with the library, and Laura Willard with the DPW. All of those individuals have had 10 years of service for the city. Let's give them all a round of applause and thank you. The next item on the agenda is a presentation by the Claussen Youth Assistance by previous Mayor Penny Loobes.
I'm Nancy Minkler. I'm the caseworker with Claussen Youth Assistance, and I'm here with Penny Loobes, our chairperson. We want you to recognize Claussen Youth Assistance as compassionate, energetic, and effective in helping families, so we'd like to briefly review our accomplishments for this fiscal year.
Claussen Youth Assistance is actually your child. We were created in 1960 by a resolution by the Claussen City Council. We're sponsored by the City of Claussen, Claussen Public Schools, and Oakland County Circuit Court. Working together, these three entities provide services that are beyond the budget of any one organization. The city provides a cash sponsorship of $6,200. The court provides casework services along with organizational support. Casework services really means a licensed master-level social worker who provides counseling. The school district provides $1,000 in office, secretarial support, phone, postage, and utilities. Our work would not be possible without all three of our sponsors, and we thank you. We believe that now more than ever, families need support, and we are passionate about providing it compassionately and effectively.
We provide a variety of prevention services to Claussen families. The first we're going to talk about is counseling services at the Baker Center, and that's me. I'm a master's-level social worker with 20 years' experience counseling at-risk kids. In addition, I've recently completed all my coursework to become a registered play therapist, and I've finished about 325 of the 500 contact hours required, and that's important. I'm not just boasting. That's important because we're seeing more and more kids with a history of trauma, and play therapy is proven to be effective with those kids, and that's what's coming in our doors these days. In fiscal year 2017, I had 12 new referrals. Of those 12 referrals, four came from the schools, six were police referrals, and two were parent referrals. I currently have 14 active counseling cases, and that number fluctuates through the year. People start dropping off at the beginning of June as school gets out, and then in September and October, that number will start coming back up, but 14 is about average for this time of year. In addition to those counseling cases, we worked with another three families on an information and referral basis. In other words, we're helping them to find and access services for specialized family needs without opening a case. Our services are really low-cost. There's a one-time $25 processing fee when a family accepts services. So for that fee, they access services that would cost between $120 and $170 per session in today's market. So a family who came to me every other week for a year, 24 sessions, out-of-pocket or with private health insurance, that would be about $3,000 in fees, which is well beyond what some of our lower-income families or our uninsured families could afford.
We also provide a number of primary prevention programs. The first is camp. Camp experiences play as an important prevention role, providing enrichment experiences, an opportunity to stretch and learn new skills, to make new friends in a new environment, and to learn about families who may live differently than your own. Last summer, we sent 10 children to Camp Copaconic for one week each, 15 to Fund in the Sun for two weeks each, one to Boy Scout Camp for a week. We have relationships with each of these camps and are able to access deep discounts. We spent $5,770 on camp, but the retail cost of these camperships would have been $8,600. We point to this as an example of our good stewardship of public money and the value-added we provide. We're also proud that we fundraised $4,600 of the 2017 camp budget.
We also provide something called skill-building grants. Self-esteem increases as children master developmental tasks and skills. Our grants allow children from low-income families to participate in organized activities that might otherwise be out of their reach, and that helps them build skills. The maximum grant is $200 per child per year, and some of the activities we funded in the last year include Mavericks football and cheer, school pay-to-participate fees, karate, Safety Town fees, advanced placement test fees, Junior Trojans basketball, and field trip costs.
One program under Youth Assistance that I'm particularly proud of is our Family Recreation Program. Family Recreation allows families to access activities that strengthen family bonds, build good memories that help families navigate through stressful times, and provide enrichment and education for our children. In the last fiscal year, our programming included a trip to Red Oaks Water Park. It's coming up again this year, June 29. We subsidize the tickets, so you can purchase tickets now for $3 each at Hunter Community Center. We meet as a group at the water park and enter at 11:00 a.m. So that price is much different than the $16.50 you would pay for one person entering the park on your own. We sponsor the Trick or Treat Trail, the Easter egg hunt. We went to a Tigers game a few weeks ago. We sponsor bounce houses and slides. We went geocaching at Independence Oaks. We do quite a few activities in the community and collaborate with a variety of groups. Finally, one program we offer is youth recognition, and that occurred in May. We recognize 16 young people for volunteer activities that enrich our community. This is a wonderful community event with a small-town feel, and I hope you'll all be able to attend next year.
As you may know, we're unusual in that we have no personnel costs. Secretarial support is provided by Claussen Schools. The Circuit Court provides my services, and our volunteers do the rest. Our overhead is really low. Our insurance runs about $700 a year. Our chamber membership is $65. We pay $50 to attend two meetings a year, and we spend about $50 a year on office supplies, and that's it. That's all of our overhead. Everything else we get goes to services, goes pretty much directly to families. We're compassionate towards families, and we're really passionate about helping in a timely and effective manner. And as I hope you can see, we're also serious about using your sponsorship effectively and efficiently. Penny negotiates freebies and discounts for family recreation events. We seek support from the business community for camp and the Trick or Treat Trail, and I negotiate discounts and freebies with the camps and the rec programs. So we consider ourselves small but mighty, and we believe ourselves to be truly a value-added resource for the community.
We're almost done. We are managing well on our sponsorships. You provide money, and we're not requesting an increase in monies at this time. However, we do have a request. Our original charter, that one from 1960, states that a member of the city council will sit on our board of directors as a non-voting advisory member. I fulfilled that role for 14 years, but our relationship with you is important to us. We're asking that one of you join us on the third Tuesday of the month at 5:30 to help us coordinate our programming with your priorities. We also have a school representative on our committee that attends monthly. We will not have, we had a meeting earlier today. Our meetings last no longer than 6:30. Our next meeting will be in September. So we are planning activities for the summer. We're beginning to plan our fall activities, but we respectfully request one of your presence or assistance at our Youth Assistance Board meetings. Thank you.
Can you say those are the third Tuesday?
Yes. I plan on continuing on the committee. I'm the Youth Assistance Chair. I enjoy the work we do. I enjoy the people I work with. I enjoy the events and the programming that we have. Fundraising is not really a hardship because it's for a good cause. So we're here to help people who live in Claussen, but we can't do it by ourselves. We would like, we need help. We'd like you to help.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is consideration of a resolution requesting the reimbursement from the Oakland County West Nile Fund for the purchase of West Nile Larvicide briquettes. And I understand that those have already been installed in all of the drains. They did that earlier in the spring to head them off. The total cost was $4,967.40.
Madam Mayor, I move the resolution to the County of Oakland requesting reimbursement from the Oakland County West Nile Virus Fund in the amount of $1,524.59 for implementation and completion of the West Nile Virus Larvicide briquet program in the City of Claussen be approved.
Support.
Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Milan.
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett.
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Yes.
Mayor Woolley.
Yes.
Councilmember Aris.
Yes.
And the motion carries. The next item is consideration of renewing the contract with the City of Troy for dispatch and jail services through July 1st, 2019. It looks like we have Chief Anderson in here to speak of it.
Madam Mayor and members of council, yes, it's that time of year again for the renewal of the contracted services with the City of Troy for our dispatch and jail services. As I, included in my report that I sent to you, the contract every year is, it's set to expire June 30th of 2018, and prior to that, Troy evaluates what the cost of the service is to them, and then they come forward and propose that either, they have decreased in the past, they've increased, and it's stayed the same. This year, they propose a cost increase of 2%. They base that 2% increase on their communications supervisors are set to get a 2% increase in their wages, and their service aides who are currently under negotiation for their contract, they expect to get the same 2%. So therefore, they propose a 2% increase. That amount was included in the budget for this fiscal year, 1819. It's my recommendation that the proposed cost of $16,990 be approved, and we carry forward with the contract. Troy does an excellent job in providing the services. They just renewed their, we went to the Next Generation 911, which allows call-taking capabilities of text messages, video, and such. They just got a brand-new generator system put in at the operations center up there, so if they're out of power, we won't lose services and we won't lose contact with our officers. So it's my recommendation that it's approved. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
Madam Mayor, I move the new contract with the City of Troy for dispatch and jail services.
Thanks.
Effective July 1st, 2018, be approved, and to authorize Chief of Police Harry Anderson to sign the agreement.
Support. Are there any other questions or comments? I know they've done a great job for us, and all the officers have been pleased with what they've done for us. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Moffett.
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Yes.
Mayor Woolley.
Yes.
Councilmember Aris.
Yes.
Councilmember Milan.
Yes.
And the motion carries. The next item on the agenda is consideration of approving a new contract terms with McKenna for planning services for the City of Claussen, and Jim Albus is here to introduce.
Madam Mayor and members of council, I'd like to introduce Mario Ortega. He will be taking over our planning services, representing McKenna and Associates. Most recently, he's been working in Williamston and Orion in the state of Michigan for McKenna, covering those two communities. He will be taking over our community as his primary community. He has a Bachelor of Science in urban and regional planning from Eastern Michigan University. He has a Bachelor of Arts from the school just beyond Eastern. As an MSU fan, I had to say it that way. He is also certified in the American Institute of Certified Planners, and he does have experience in larger communities also, and I'll let him say a few words.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Just wanted to say I'm very excited to be here. This seems like a great time for Claussen and for cities in general. You're making such a vast investment in the downtown with your recent projects, and now is a time to build on that momentum, to assist the businesses with their growth, to help them navigate through the ordinances in such a way that they maximize their investment in the community and they see maximum returns. And we can do that through planning and through the creation of new ordinances. And having been at your recent Planning Commission meeting, I know that there are some challenges, but every community has those challenges, and so it's a very exciting time to tackle those and to, as I mentioned, assist all the community members, not only the businesses but also the residents, to make sure that we build upon the positive aspects within the city.
You're welcome. We're glad you're here. Thank you very much for taking time to introduce yourself.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
Can we speak to the audience and address the question?
No.
Public discussion.
It's an ad hoc vote. Can we invoke some privacy?
There's an availability in the agenda to discuss it. We're just here to renew the contract.
There is no contract.
We're here to approve.
Does the contract from 2011, do you want to speak, or do you want a public discussion?
Do you have an opinion, Mr. Counselor?
Kingsepp, for today's purposes. Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you for having me here today. Certainly, your pleasure as to whether you're allowed or not. Obviously, the time set is for, you know, it is after the vote at the end during the public discussion. That would be the appropriate time, unless there's a vote among the five of you that does agree to do so, to waive that requirement.
Is it going to change anything if they speak now or later? It's not going to make the meeting any longer or shorter? It's not going to change your opinion on whether you vote on the contract or not? Is that true?
That would be so.
I don't.
It wouldn't really be harmful.
I guess we can, we'll limit that to five minutes.
Madam Mayor, I move that we allow public discussion at this time.
If the discussion does say, I just have an agenda.
Would you just please go up to the microphone and state your name and your address, please?
Madam Mayor, would that second the motion for procedural purposes and then have a
vote, and then you may allow it.
Okay.
I'll second it. I second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Yes.
Mayor Woolley.
Yes.
Councilmember Aris.
Yes.
Councilmember Milan.
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett.
No.
My name is Ree Scripture. I live at 148 Park Drive, Claussen, Michigan, and I am also a Planning Commissioner and a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I am here tonight to ask you to table approval of the new contract with McKenna. I do this because I am deeply concerned about the lack of transparency regarding the process, regarding the public comments made by city council members in the April 25, 2018 budget workshop in which they called Mr. Elliott unethical over strong objections from one city council member, the city manager, and the director of building and planning. The city manager and a city council member pleaded with city council to give Mr. Elliott an opportunity to speak on his behalf, but none was ever given. Based on the video of that meeting, city council publicly besmirched a person's professional reputation and character with no evidence and no due process. According to the timeline that I've been able to piece together, on October 26, 2017, members of the planning staff approached the city manager with a loose proposal for changes to the staffing structure of the planning department designed to improve the efficiencies and save the city money in the upcoming fiscal year budget. On November 2, 2017, this verbal idea was discussed between the city manager, the city planner, and the city attorney. On February 9, 2018, the city attorney asked for a written proposal from the city planner or the planning staff. On May 22, 2018, a notice was posted for a study session, public meeting to discuss informally the selection of a new city planner. Tonight, the council is voting on that selection. Sometime between November 2, November 2, 2017, and May 22, 2018, the city council made a series of decisions that included firing Greg and replacing him. Under the Open Meetings Act, all decisions of the public body shall be at a meeting open to public. I can find no public records of these decisions. Also, a big concern is that no time between the first conversation in October 2017 through the study session held May 2018 was the Planning Commission or the ZBA included in deliberations or decisions regarding the department that supports our work. Further, the May 2018 study session was deliberately structured to limit our participation by forbidding comments and questions and by holding the meeting during the time the Planning Commission was holding its regularly-scheduled official meeting. Planning Commission and the ZBA has been entirely excluded from this process, excluded from the opportunity to weigh in on the treatment of the current planner, excluded from the request for proposal process, and excluded from the selection process. At our last meeting, we were introduced to our next city planner with no preamble, and it appears prematurely since council has not yet voted on this selection. It is clear that decisions were made behind closed doors and in secrecy. I find this reprehensible. Michigan was ranked last in the country for transparency in a 2015 study by the Centers for Public Integrity and Global Integrity. Claussen should not be part of that problem. We should be part of the solution by finding ways to be more transparent, not less. I also find it unprofessional and disrespectful to completely disregard the opinions and input of your fellow public servants on the Planning Commission and the ZBA who work just as hard as you do to serve Claussen. And I know that several commissioners have reached out to you personally to ask that you discuss this and have been rebuffed. Fortunately, you have the opportunity to correct these mistakes and make things right. Simply table this vote, establish an appropriate and transparent process, and include the Planning Commission and ZBA in that process. I'm fully confident that the planning staff can keep things moving along and in order for the duration of that process. Thank you.
I'm Scott Watson, 127 West Tacoma, Claussen. I'm coming up to say that I was invited to the May 22 meeting to discuss Greg Elliott, and I've been in businesses for about the last 27 years, and I've never been in a position where I've watched someone be publicly humiliated without an opportunity to speak on his behalf or say anything. And I just, I didn't understand it. I don't understand why we were invited there. We received that invite about a week before. I wasn't able to speak there, and I just didn't appreciate how someone was talked to in public like that. If that was a conversation somebody was having in private, that's one thing, but to take him out in public and talk to him like that, I found very offensive, and I just want that to be stated.
Hi, are we at five minutes? Are we okay? I'll be really quick. Melissa Prowse, 118, Dakota Street in Claussen. I'm also on the Planning Commission, and these guys really said everything that I was going to say or would have said, and I did speak at the last Planning Commission as well, where we were surprised by the introduction of our new planner, who we had no idea was coming, and we told Mario this has nothing to do with him, and he's very aware of that, and we're happy to be working with him going forward. But just kind of in the spirit of collaboration, and I know as a city, we've been trying really hard to bring our councils and our commissions together and kind of be moving forward as one, and this just felt a little bit like a step back, like a little bit of a slap in the face, honestly, to the Planning Commission, who was kind of blindsided by this action. So I know what's done is done, and I know that the prerogative of the council is yours, but I do share the same concerns that Ree's outlined in her statements, and just wanted to share that with you. Thank you.
I just wanted to make one comment publicly. Mr. Elliott requested that his personnel matter be discussed in closed session. That was a request made by Mr. Elliott with case law provided in that email. City council honored the request by Mr. Elliott to keep that private, so I just wanted to say that publicly. And, you know, that information, I'm sure, is available, so I just wanted to say that, and thank you very much for your time. In addition, the renewing the contract with McKenna is not related to an individual that would be representing the city. Their, Mr. McKenna, or Mr. Jackson employs this new city planner as well as employing Mr. Elliott. So the decision, as far as the contract goes, is a separate item from the personnel involved. I just wanted to say that as well. So this time, the next item on the agenda is the consideration of approving the new contract with McKenna pending approval of the language by the city attorney, Mr. Kingsepp.
Your Honor, I move the new contract with McKenna be approved, or to provide planning services for the City of Claussen be approved pending, with the opportunity to review the language from John Kingsepp.
Is there a second?
The motion does not carry.
I'll second it.
Pardon me?
I'll second it. I would, John, we got to write, I think that's right.
You do have, yeah, I apologize, and you're looking at me, and I was waiting to hear the words. You have the ability to approve subject to John's, you know, Mr. Kingsepp's review of just contractual language, so you do have that option, and you may take the vote today.
I have a question. Do we have the current contract as proposed?
The answer to that, I don't know. I have emailed, I had an email exchange with Mr. Kingsepp, and my understanding is that he's been in contact with McKenna and Associates, but I'm not 100% sure on the status of that negotiation.
100% sure on the status of that, of that negotiation.
I do think it's premature, personally. To vote on the contract, I would prefer to have Mr. Kingsup present for that.
Certainly, your prerogative, obviously.
So do we need a motion then to?
Well, at this point, because there was a second, you need to do a roll, roll call at this time.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Woolley.
No.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Milan.
No.
Councilmember Moffett.
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht.
No.
So the motion does not carry, and it can be, it can be reissued at a later time with the additional information.
Absolutely. That is correct.
Thank you.
So in other words, John's got to look at the contract first.
And provide it to us so that we can have a chance to review it as well.
Okay.
And then you can submit, obviously, at that time, you know, he can address, you know, whatever contract. He could address all the terms of the contract that presented to you, and you may take a vote at that time. Bring up the motion yet again.
But for the record, that doesn't change appointing Mario to the city man, or the city planner position.
Now, from my understanding, our relationship with McKenna continues.
Right. And so we go forward with Mario being put in place.
The next item on the agenda is a consideration of the second reading and adoption of an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 54, Peddlers and Solicitors. At the last meeting, the proposed ordinance was discussed, and the fees were amended per the consensus of the council and the fee schedule, and in the fee schedule. I recommend the ordinance to be reintroduced and entered into second reading and adopted.
Mayor, I move the proposed ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 54, Peddlers, Solicitors, and Canvassers, Article 1, in general, by adding 4, 54-13 exemptions, and to create new Chapter 55, Mobile Food Vending Regarding the Regulations and Application Process for Permitting Vending, Servicing, or Offering for Sale Food Beverages and/or Related Merchandise from the Motorized or Non-Motorized Cart Stand, Car, Cart Stand, Trailer Vehicle, or Other Device Designed to be Portable and Not Permanently Attached to the Ground Within the City on Public or Private Property, be reintroduced and entered into second reading and adopted.
Support.
Are there any additional questions? I have one. Second reading, when would this become effective, Mr. Smith?
Once we are provided with the synopsis, then it's 10 days after that is published. So chances are, it'll be after the 4th of July.
Thank you very much. I'm sure the food vendors will be appreciative of that just because of the short window of preparing all their documents. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Milan.
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett.
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Yes.
Mayor Woolley.
Yes. The next item on the agenda is the consideration of approving the amendments to the 2017, 2018 fiscal year budget. Mr. Pollak, would you like to speak to some of those items before we vote?
Just in summary, we, we had, actually, the amendments in the general fund decreased our budgeted deficit, which is great. In the other funds, we had some decreases, some increases. I think the most impacted fund was the motor equipment fund, which I know the mayor had some questions for me earlier, which I tried to detail, but for the most part, it was, it was not a good year for equipment, especially old equipment maintenance and supplies. And then we paid more than we had in years past for gas and oil. So those adjustments resulted in about just under another $23,000, but we will still have a fund balance reserve in all of our funds with these amendments. Another issue or item was the flood litigation that's ongoing, added some costs that we had in the budget, and that will continue into the next budget year. But all of the amendments themselves are, I mean, and there's nothing shocking there, but there were certainly some that increased. Best news, again, we had a great year in building and planning because we were able to increase most of our permit revenues and things of that nature. So there were some increases in revenues and some actually decreases and increases in expenses, but, I mean, from an average year, because we do amendments twice a year, every year, we had less than we normally have, which, I guess that is always a good thing. We did, I think, we amended in December the healthcare costs, which we left, we're able to leave the same because we did have three really good months, and we had two bad months in a row. So, but as far as amendments go, this is, this was, to me, a below-average year for adjustments to amendments to the budget.
Thank you very much for the information.
Madam Mayor, I move the June 30, 2018 budget amendments be approved as listed.
Second, or support, whatever.
There aren't any other questions? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Milan.
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett.
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Yes.
Mayor Woolley.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is consideration of a resolution proclaiming July 18 as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Claussen. Parks and Recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Claussen, and our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all of our citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. And parks and recreation build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. Parks and Rec, Parks and Recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environment well-being of our community, and improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitats for wildlife. And recreation, natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. The U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and the city of Claussen recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation. So I would like to have the resolution recognized, or proclamation recognized.
Madam Mayor, I move that the resolution proclaiming July 2018 as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Claussen be approved.
Support.
I would like just to say that this is a great time for us in the city of Claussen. We have our beautiful gem over there at City Park, and the 4th of July is soon to be upon us, and we will be entertaining guests, visitors, and citizens alike over there. So I'm excited that we're making this proclamation. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Moffett.
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Yes.
Mayor Woolley.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Milan.
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is consideration of approving the final contract agreement for July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2023, with the Ask Me AFL-CIO and Chapter B Local 574 employees. Mr. Pollak, would you like to enlighten us on some of these details?
We had expiring contracts for our three unions. Ask Me is basically our DPW employees and some clerical employees through the same union, and then our police officers have two labor council representing command and patrol units. We've met over about the last four months, collectively bargained, had some yeses and some nos. We generally work on, try and work on a dollar figure with our unions, and in the interest of fairness, we always come down to some things we can approve and some things we can reject. We do have tentative agreements with all of our unions, pending council approval, and the mayor does sign those documents. So, again, as, as negotiations go, we have a five-year contract on the table. It certainly helps us. Mike did a lot of work to clean up contract language. I commend him. It was not easy because we had extremely old language in our Ask Me contract, and what Mike did is organize our contracts, all three, to be kind of in the same flow, and that was a lot of work. And, and I know all the unions appreciated that as well, but it's a long process, but it certainly was one, I think we feel is rewarding. They feel the city's fair to them, and we feel their demands are fair. So we're certainly recommending that the council approve all three unions' budgets or contracts.
Have the contracts gone to the vote of the unions yet?
They have not. We were waiting for council approval to do that, so.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move the city council ratify the final contract agreement for July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2023, with the Ask Me AFL-CIO and Chapter B Local 574 employees be approved and signed.
Support. Were there any additional questions in regard to the contract? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Yes.
Mayor Woolley.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Milan.
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett.
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is consideration of approving the final contract agreement for July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2023, with the Police Officers Labor Council and the Claussen Command Officers Association.
Mayor, I move the city council ratify the final contract agreement for July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2023, with the Police Officers Labor Council and this Claussen Command Officers Association be approved and signed.
Support. Are there any other questions with this specific contract? Roll call, please.
Mayor Woolley.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Milan.
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett.
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Yes.
The next item is approving the contract agreement for July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2023, with the Police Officers Labor Council and the Claussen Police Patrol Officers Association.
Madam Mayor, I move the city council ratify the final contract agreement for July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2023, with the Police Officers Labor Council and the Claussen Patrol Officers Association be approved and signed.
Support.
Are there any other questions? This particular contract. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Milan.
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett.
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Yes.
Mayor Woolley.
Yes. And the contracts have all been approved. The next item on the agenda is consideration of the list of bills as presented.
Madam Mayor, approve the bills.
Support.
Are there any questions on the bills? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Milan.
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett.
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Yes.
Mayor Woolley.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
We're going to bill you the bills. The next item on the agenda is the city attorney's report. Would you be reporting?
Madam Mayor.
On Mr. Kingsup's behalf?
On behalf of Mr. Kingsup, I'd like to say that he will be back next week, and I'll be back to see and viewing this honored council from my favorite seat up there on the front row. And that's the extent of the report. Thank you very much.
Thank you. City managers' report.
Just a couple items. Again, I'll, I guess, give kudos to our residents and businesses who are now increasing recycling. We had an increase nearly 40% from May to May. The carts are working. We encourage you to continue to put your recycling in those bins. Again, they're still having some issues with yard waste pickup. It's taking a little bit longer, but as the season goes on and it starts to get drier, they'll have less yard waste to pick up, so they'll be able to do it quicker. But again, I commend the residents here because our numbers are way up. And then the other issue is, we did have another small, I guess none of them are small if you're impacted, DTE outage today. They said it was an overuse outage, which I guess I would have expected yesterday or the day before, but it did impact and shut down part of the grid here. They, last I heard, it had not been restored, but it was scheduled to today. Maybe some parts of it were, but I encourage, again, if you have issues, please call the toll-free number assigned to Claussen, 877-591-6960. Continue to report. We are getting activity. We're getting response from DTE. So please keep calling and keep leaving messages because I think it's eventually going to work citywide, and it is working for certain areas. So I encourage everyone to continue to call that number and leave messages.
Do you know about?
I was going to say, the rumor was that it was, there was a squirrel and some fire. Is that false?
And we did hear, I heard the rumors as well. I don't have that confirmed, but it could be a section. Yeah, there was a squirrel on a line on a tree that went into a power line and caused at least part of the outage. So that, that can happen. And a lot of it is the trees near the lines or into the lines that caused the problem. So unfortunately, animals, wild animals can cause outages as well, but a lot of it's due to trees that I know they're scheduled again in the fall to do more trimming. So hopefully, all of that gets resolved, and we won't have these frequent outages.
How large of an area was it marked, and where was it located?
It was similar as, to a recent one. It was, it spared City Hall, but although we have a generator if it does happen here, but it ran from 14 Mile almost to Bywood and then to the north all the way up to Maple, but it was kind of this section of the city excluding some of the businesses along Main Street on the west side. But it did run from 14 Mile again, near Bywood, all the way up to Maple.
Mark, have you said anything more about, I haven't seen them doing any cutting in the southern area, so.
They did trimming in the spring. It was very limited. Again, they, they had a bit of a fiasco a few years ago where they were marking trees and not notifying residents that were on personal property, and they said they did want to avoid that when they do it again this year. They will be back in the fall, and then again, hopefully, people will get notice and at least be notified that either a tree is going to be trimmed severely or taken down. But they should be back in the fall. I think they're waiting. This, this is not a good time to trim trees. Unfortunately, this is when they have the biggest incidences of outages, so, but they do plan to come back in the fall and continue trimming.
Because the trees are always the problem.
True.
That's, you know.
The engineer upgrades and the substation upgrades are continuing, are ongoing. Individuals, again, if, if an individual from an address leaves their address, they're checking from that address to see. We, I had a resident today who left a message. He was frustrated, lives on Oakley. It's a small area of residents, but they're, they were told, they were getting low voltage, and they were told the transformer needed to be replaced, but it hasn't been replaced yet. So I reached out to Mike today, and I said, "Just get it replaced. You're going to make everybody happy if you get it fixed," so. But they identified that. It's just taken, again, it's taken too long, and that's the message we passed along, is if you identify the issue, just get it resolved.
Well, now that we have it such a, again, a large area, and even if individuals aren't able to watch it this evening, I would encourage all of you that have lost power to inundate their call center that they've made available to us to impress upon the fact that we are a united voice, and we want to be heard, and we want it fixed. So please, please make those calls.
Mark, is that a special number?
It's 877-591-6960. And it will be, it's a, basically an answering line, so you'll leave a message, but please leave your name and number and a contact, your address, and a contact for them to get back to you. And from what I understand, they have been doing a good job of contacting people. Occasionally, they, they miss, or they'll, they'll miss somebody, but they're trying to get back to everyone who leaves a message, so. If you don't hear back from them, please call, call me here and let me know, because then I can stay on. I like to make sure that they're keeping their word.
It's great that they're getting back with people, but if they're not addressing the issue, I mean, we have to stay on them from the city as well, just because placating someone's not really what we're after here, right?
And these are the, these are the engineers that control the substations that they're dealing with, so they are supposed to be the problem solvers. So we just want to make sure the problems are getting solved. And again, they, I know they say it takes time, but, you know, how much time? Just get them resolved. And I think they're, they're focusing on trying to do that. The frequent outages is the biggest issue. Weather-related, wind-related, squirrel-related, I guess occasionally it's understandable, but just get the issues, the ongoing issues that they're having, just get them resolved.
Since we don't have a screen up here, number again is 877-591-6960. So call them.
Yeah, and I'll ask Mike if he and Victoria will put that to the top of Facebook on a regular basis so people can see, that go to the Facebook page, have it up there frequently.
Mr. Pollak, please express again to Mike that we would love to have a met council meeting.
Okay, I will.
Was there anything else, Mr. Pollak?
That's all I have.
Okay. City clerks' report.
Madam Mayor and counsel, I do have a few things. I wanted to thank everyone, of course.
I wanted to thank everyone, of course, I'm sure you probably say it as well, for attending the employee and volunteer picnic. I wanted to give a special thank you to Stacy and Lisa and the Treasurers Department for doing all the work necessary to get the gift certificates for all the employees. So I just wanted to thank them as well for our offices working together. As well as tied into that, we did update officially this morning the Clausen phone system. So we do have the new voice. If you've called in, if not, give it a call and let us know what you think. But the city treasurer is now the new voice of Clausen. Now that the union contracts have been updated, now we'll be working on, at some point, intermingled between the election, the part-time and full-time personnel policy. So that's kind of been the next step now, to kind of implement some of those things that are in the contracts into that. So I'll be working kind of in that over the next six months or so. We'll also be working on, again, some ordinances, which we're still reviewing from other communities and how they've handled that with regulations, with chickens, burn ordinance. And then I just talked to the code officer about the grass and other things that are kind of outdated in our current code to kind of bring forth some discussion on those. We are hoping to have the new election equipment. I will keep on talking about this every time. Please vote, so please register to vote by July 9th for the August election if you want to vote in that election. This will probably be the first time some people see the new equipment, because November, we rolled it out, but we always have a low turnout in odd years where this year, we're going to have a higher turnout. So we're going, all the city clerks throughout Oakland County and the state are all trying to really remind people again that there is new equipment, so when they go there, they will see something new. It's a, it's a more streamlined process and I'm hoping to have it out in City Hall again, so people can come and do a demo ballot and kind of see how the process works, just so they know. There's like multiple codes of, or levels of authentication and all these things. The technology is amazing on the new equipment. So we'll be having that out there so they can see them, so it's not the first time, so it's available out there. Again, the registration deadline for August is July 9th. The absentee ballots will be arriving this week and we'll be hoping to mail them out after we test them. I know we get this question a lot, probably within, I would say, the second week of July, just because the first week is 4th of July and there's too much going on there. We have to test them first. We did mail out the absentee applications to all those on the permanent list. So again, I remind everyone, if you did not receive one, please stop in or call our office and we'll send out an application. Hopefully, everyone will do that. We are still always accepting applications for inspectors to work for us. We're always welcoming new, new faces. We've had a couple of new people that have applied, so it's been wonderful to kind of get them on board, because we like to train them, have them work in August, so then when November is really busy, they've had an election under their belt. So it really helps us out, because some people are starting to retire from, from working with us as they're saying it's time to move on. And I guess just one last thing is we do have, I did post it out there, but just kind of reiterate that we do have an opening at the city for administrative clerical position. It is out there now to work the treasurer and/or possibly the water billing. It's kind of a, it's a union contract, so it is out there. I did, I think we're going to post it on the Facebook page as well, so it is posted on the city website. That is all I have tonight.
Thank you very much. The next item is unfinished business. Does anybody have any unfinished business?
I don't know if this should be brought up in unfinished or just do it in public discussion, because someone's here about it. What do you think there, Counselor?
With respect to?
Some new telephone business?
Yes.
Want to, as a new business item?
Well.
And then move on to public discussion shortly thereafter?
We could do that, yeah.
New business. I have one item that I'd like to add and then we'll be able to. There was some concerns, the light on Main Street on Walper that turns to a flashing light, I believe at 5:00 PM. And then the crosswalk light doesn't engage. Is there, Mark, could you look into that and maybe reach out to Chief Anderson and the Traffic Safety Board? And I understand that the flashing yellow, but if somebody's standing there when they push the button, it would be nice if traffic would stop and let them pass.
Yeah, and I don't know if Eric wants to talk about it now, or we can address it later, but the light itself is not activated by the push button. When the light is active, the crosswalk button works.
How do we, is that an expense?
We've gone back and forth with this on the Traffic and Safety Board several times. What it is, is it's a setting of how long you want that light to work, because it only works for a pedestrian pushing the button when the light is in the cycling mode. We, when we set the, when the, when the light was originally set up, it was set for a long period of time and we had a bunch of people come in complaining that they're stuck at a red light when they could turn on to, on to Main Street off of a Walper or Charlevoy. So then we reduced it. Now we have complaints that people want to cross there and use the button. The, the road commission sets that for whatever times we want them to set that for.
Is that a matter of, there are some lights that do that, correct? That if they're in flashing and that the button will initiate the light to change?
I don't know if there is such a monster out there. What I was told by the, the, the road commission is that you have to kind of pick your, pick and choose, either one or the other one.
Because I'm, now that it's going down to one lane, that's a busy traffic pattern and we also have a very vibrant downtown and people are crossing there.
Right.
And 5:00 is awful early for them to not be able to get across the street and go to the businesses that continue to be open.
We can set it to any, you know, I mean, if, but we're going to hear about it on the other end, but it's, it's like one of those things that our Traffic and Safety Board has taught. We've had people come before that board on numerous times complaining on both ends of it. And I've, I've been feeling those complaints too, from people that want to walk their kids and it gives them a break so that they can cross there.
What's the longest interval you could set it at so that it would still be, you could push it to cross, but it wouldn't be too disruptive to the flow of traffic?
Well, it won't, it's.
If it's not doing red and green, then it won't stop.
I was saying, what's the longest interval between red and green?
I know when the, when the light is, when the light is in cycling mode, it's in a string with the other lights and they time them so that they're, it's like a, you know, like if you've gone through Main Street, you don't want to automatically get stopped at the red light there. If you're doing the speed limit, it should be adjust, it's, it's adjusted in that loop so that it cycles, so that the traffic moves slowly. So that's the way it was explained to me by the experts from the road commission.
I mean, is it reasonable to say that light works until 8:00 at night, 9:00 at night? I mean, I may, that's something I guess you guys can discuss and see what kind of solutions.
I can, I can bring it back to the board this, this next time and, you know, maybe it's something that can be an experiment. Maybe even when there's, like in summer months, when there's more pedestrians out, that we extend that time period a little bit rather than, and it's just a matter of calling the, the road commission and they come out and set the light to exactly when we want them to set it.
I know my children and I have been a victim of that light. We, we pushed the button and then waited for.
And you sit there waiting for it.
Yeah, we're waiting, looking around, you know, and finally we figured out that the, the walk signal wasn't coming. But we didn't have a problem crossing. I mean, traffic was light enough at the time. So even, even a sign that says, you know, something to the effect of the button doesn't work after 5:00 or something, I, that might help, I don't know.
Duck tape.
Or a bag like we have down here at the Crossing Islands.
An island halfway across the, no, I'm just kidding.
Right, another island.
I could see that being a major problem, if that light's going on, you know, like to 7:00 or 8:00, because with all the hoop-de-doo that's going on there between the tavern, the ice cream place, the woodpile and everything. I mean, it'd be, it'd be nothing but a bottleneck. I could see that coming if, if we had them lights working.
It just seems like a battle that we've discussed so many times and, and you have, you have people complaining on one side or the other. It's like when we change it to one way, the other side complains, so.
Do we do a sign for real? I mean, if people knew, would they be less, like, would they not wait? They know.
Yep. We can try that. I'll talk to the road commission, see if they have, or even Pat Colley from the Transportation Department, see if they have. Like with our Crossing Islands, we tried to write it all out and then, then we were criticized for being so wordy and no one's going to read it. So it's, you know, it sounds like darned if you do, darned if you don't, deal with it.
You got to figure with Royal Oak. See, that's all going to be one lane coming through, or two lanes. That's it, it won't be four lanes anymore coming in from the south side. They're putting just three lanes in and bike lanes.
Yeah, dedicated bike lane.
Right.
I'm just trying to give people down there a little bit of relief, because most, most families aren't leaving their home till after 5:00 to go enjoy the things downtown and.
You know, and, and we've done it in the past where we can do things on a trial basis and see what, what kind of feedback we get with it. But I will, I will bring it before the Traffic and Safety Board. I'll put it on the next, this next month's agenda and we can discuss it again. They'll be hearing about it. I'll hear about it.
Thank you. Thank you for looking into it. Appreciate it.
Okay, thanks.
Other new business items?
I talked to one of our longtime businesses down Tavern on the Main and he's been having quite a few problems there, with the city, without the city and, you know, everything. He, he, he wants to move out of the city. He's put $600,000 into this place and he's worked very hard. He was sick, sickly there for a while. We need to give him some help. We got to put our heads together and figure out what we got to do with some parking issues down there pertaining to woodpile. Some other items with signs, things of that nature that the city wants them to do and put up. I mean, I know he's not over the law, but we, there's something we should be able to do and think out of the box to get this situation ratified down there in that, in that area. Because there's, them people in Tacoma, you know, I feel bad for them. They can't get out of the driveways, they can't do anything. And it's just, it's not right. We, we've got to do something as, as a council, as a planning commissioner, as zoning board, or whatever we have to do, try and get this thing ratified. This parking problem is a problem down there and, and a lot of Tommy's managers here, she's, she's going to tell you, you know, or somebody's going to get shot down there. Simple and easy, because these girls go out and ask them very nicely not to park there and people, I, I don't want to even say what they've said to these girls or even the guys. And by the time they have to have a wrecker there, I think you can explain it a lot better than I can. So I'll hold off until, let her, let her explain it to, in a public discussion a little better than I can. But we, we have to do something here. I don't know what it is, but I don't like losing businesses, especially businesses is given to every charity in town, anything to do with the city. You know, it's people like that. You don't get too many of them. Well, we got a guy there, but, so I'll let it go from there. Wait for a public discussion.
I did, before we get to public discussion, wanted to just remind people that it is 4th of July season here in town and we will start with the Kitty Parade, which is coming up, what was the date? I think that's the 30th of June. Meets up here at the middle school at 11:00 and then goes to the park. And they'll be judging and all sorts of activities once you arrive at the park. So don't forget about the Kitty Parade. That's the first item up. If you'd like to help us out, that would be great. You can email me directly, w@clausenparade.com in regard to helping me with the parade or any other volunteer work that you'd like to do and I'll be able to point you in the right direction. Anyone else?
Clausen Youth Assistance is having an outing, June 29th, Red Oaks, $3 a ticket at Hunter.
Okay.
How's the parade coming?
We always have a parade. We always have one. And we will have traffic and we will have fireworks. And there is no rain date for the fireworks. There's no rain date for the parade. Just for people to realize, once they place those fireworks at the park, they have to go up. Rain or shine, once they're placed, they have to shoot them off. So there will never be a rain date, even if it's sprinkling, they're, they're going up. So make sure you bring your blanket and claim your space and come enjoy them. There will be additional porta-johns outside of the park as well to alleviate some of the concerns that the neighborhood had with people wanting to use their restrooms.
I've been checking the weather for 4th of July and it looks like it's going to be great.
It never rains on my parade.
I know, it's going to be great.
Lucky you.
Two-week forecasts are pretty accurate, typically.
You have to look at the pilots.
Don't push my bubble, man.
You got to look at the pilots' weather reports. Those are pretty accurate.
We will have concrete and blacktop in the city too.
July 1st, that's what they tell me.
We will, we will have blacktop, 14 Main. It will be done. New, new one, new blacktop.
I'm told July 1st. Public discussion is now open.
My name's Rhonda Banfield. I'm the manager of the Tavern on the Main and I would like to thank Howie, first of all, for all your kind words about, and our business. That is one of the main reasons I am here tonight, is the parking problem. We have tried everything and are humanly possible on our end. And as far as we're concerned, you, the city, have, have caused the problem. And you have told us numerous times that you'll take care of it, you'll work something out, you'll figure something out, and it's only gotten worse and worse and worse. So now when I go to, for instance, I took today off, or tonight off and worked today. Within 15 minutes, I had a Comcast truck parked right in front of this tow sign across the street. I took a picture, it's on my phone. I had a car, they parked right in the middle of the parking lot, thinking that we're stupid, that, you know. So there's no signs and the one lady even put me on Facebook saying I'm a vicious person and all this stuff, because I impounded a car. And I have been told that I have to call the police every single time. When I call the tow truck now, because I have been, almost ran over from somebody taking off, because I'm going to, the tow truck's there and ready to hook them and, and they said, call the police. The sergeant told me that that's what I'm supposed to do. He, they come to the thing and like Howie said, I don't care to get shot. That's what, that's how society is. People are crazy. And I have two children, I work hard, Tom works hard and you, the city has caused the problem. You, we have an order to show cause next week that we have to be here, because supposedly we have not obeyed by your ordinances or whatever. We have no problem doing everything that you say to do. All we want is, first of all, we don't understand why we can't have a digital sign. It's because we're in the DDA. But a mile down the road, not even a mile down the road, Clausen Steakhouse has one that you can get a migraine headache. Because we are in the DDA, we're not allowed to. We gave our property, he gave his property to the DDA, okay? He had beautiful landscaping, okay? Underground sprinklers. He was told, no, we're not going to take those out. You guys ripped them all out, like $8,000 worth of stuff. The guy maintained it perfectly. And if you go look at our landscaping that you, the city, is to take care of, it has weeds, dirt, everything, okay? Now then, when we get like things from the code enforcer that if the snow wasn't removed properly on the side of Tacoma, because that's our responsibility, but what about your guys' responsibility? You're always turning everything on him. He is the nicest man in the world, like Howie said. He has given everything to the city. And he got, he has gotten to the point where he's not going to give anymore. He did give the Lions Club the donation for the car show, but at one point, he wasn't even going to, he said, why should I let them use the parking lot for the car show? Why should I give them the, the donation and sponsor the car show? But he did, because it's for the Lions Club. But he's done, he, he's not, you know, he's the most, the kindest man in the world, you know? And I, I just, I, I don't understand it and it's a shame that the city of Clausen will allow somebody like him that the city of Clawson will allow somebody like him to leave the city. And that the revenue that he brings into the city is amazing. And, and, and if you get a different owner, you get somebody like the Woodpile. I've gotten a huge argument with the owner of the Woodpile. He wouldn't even talk to me. The son talked to me. The son tells me that I don't, that Tom doesn't own the parking lot. He leases the parking lot. Tom owns every single inch of that property. He pays a lot of taxes. I bring the check up here every time and pay the taxes just on the parking lot, you know? And you're, so you're gonna have this man pay $500 at least for Thursday, Friday and Saturday night for somebody to sit outside on that street and, and tell people that, what else am I supposed to do? I have to manage the restaurant. I can't be running out there telling people to leave. I have a job to do. He's not there. And it's not my job to patrol a parking lot that he owns.
Hopefully, we can see if we can get a solution to the parking issues that you're experiencing there and see if we can come up with some creative solution. I know in the past, they've talked about looking at some other options and, you know, the city just needs to find a, you know, see what we can do.
This was discussed the last time I was here and he's, they said, you, you said the same thing and nothing has changed. And it's only gotten worse. And I even told him, "Buy the lot next door to you." The gentleman that bought that lot did it on purpose. He knew exactly what he was doing. He was a smart businessman. He knew exactly what you people allowed to happen and he's gonna make money on it. So what? Let the man make money. You pay the man then for the parking lot. You caused the problem, you buy that lot and turn it into a parking lot for the Woodpile. They don't want to spend a quarter of a million dollars? What about the three-fourths of a million dollars that Tom has put into that building? It doesn't matter?
He's a nice, he's a very nice business owner.
Yeah, I mean, you know.
He's been here for many, many years.
And his, what about the Woodpile? They, they didn't file any orders outside the DDA. So, they get away with, you know, that was supposed to be a to-go restaurant. You allowed them to have a bar put in there. You, they have five parking spots, okay? We're not allowed to have any more tables in our restaurant because we don't have enough parking supposedly, okay? Then how in the world can they have that many consistent stuff, bar stools and stuff like that? Then you give them a liquor license with five parking spots. So, I, I, I mean, I'm at to the point where I told my employees, "You know what? Let's go over there and park our cars in their, in their parking lot, our employee cars, and see how they like it. And then I'll stand out there and not let a single person park anywhere."
And I, I'm not sure why that was approved, that expansion. It came to council with, from the Planning Commission and we looked to them to have found the solution before it happened. So, you know, we certainly are farther down the river and I, I understand. I talked to the neighbors on this, on Tacoma Street, so I know the frustration and I drive them down there and it's packed.
Yeah. And then I've, I've, I've heard through word of mouth that they're gonna open up the one end, you know, close down the one side of the parking. So, that, there's gonna be less parking instead of both sides of the street. And, and this is our prime time. And you're taking, I mean, I, we lose four or five cars, we're losing money, he's losing money. It'd be like me taking money from you. You wouldn't like it. I mean, like it's your job. If you had...
I'm not sure, I'm not sure what you're speaking of regarding the taking space away.
Like, okay, if, if I lose five cars that come in my parking lot, because it's packed with 10 cars from the Woodpile.
I understand.
That's taking money out of my mouth, out of Tom's mouth. It, it's not right.
Well, just, well, you know, back to seeing what kind of solution we can come up with. I mean, that's, you know, all I have to offer you at this point in time.
Who's gonna look into it?
It, it's going to have to be a city, city staff, Planning Department, Mr. Pollack as the city manager overseeing city staff, being committed and finding a solution and thinking out of the box and trying to see what we can come up with.
And so, who would I contact to find out that, to follow through with, if it is being, a solution is trying to be found? I mean, who would I contact with that?
Mr. Pollack's, I guess, the point person is the city manager.
Okay.
Have you, have, have you guys sat down with the Woodpile people and discussed this?
Oh, yeah. And, and they're not, my one response to me was, "Come and work for me, Rhonda. I'll take care, better care of you than I do, than Tom does." What do you care? I do care.
Of course you care. You're invested.
Tom's like, yeah. It's, I love my job. I love Tom like a brother. I would do, you know, anything for him. He, he's done anything, a lot for me, you know? And it's not fair to the man. He's been through enough in his life and he's good to you people, you know?
It sounds like you have several issues here. You have the parking issue, which has to be resolved with Woodpile. You have the show cause issue, which I'm assuming is coming from the renovations you did, that, so that's planning. And it's just something that hasn't been, it's just something that hasn't been completed yet. And, you know, our Planning Commission is very good about working with the businesses to ensure that even if you didn't meet the initial schedule, that if there's something going on, they'll, they'll work with you to meet the schedule. Everyone just has to work together, that's all. But, the parking issue, I was on planning when Woodpile came in. I was on planning when we approved the little outdoor area that still wasn't gonna be a lot of people. And honestly, they had a really great problem because they took off. You know, there's people there all the time and as great it is, as it is for them and the city, you guys are too close and you're landlocked.
Right, we don't want, right. And it, we don't want anything bad for them, you know what I mean?
Oh, I understand. You just want everyone to live peacefully together.
Right. But, you know, they don't have, they knew what they were doing. They got away with it. You allowed them to get away with it.
What was the mindset with the five parking spots you said?
They only had five, they have on their space only so many parking spots, but they also allotted, there's parking in front, so they allotted that as parking. And then there's also parking on the side street a little bit, right? So, they allotted that as parking to include the appropriate amount of parking for them. And it was supposed to be a carryout business. It's people in and out, you know? So, you're there for five minutes and, and someone else comes and takes your spot. Subsequently, they asked to put in that nice area in the back with seating for people to wait for. And then...
Then you gave them a liquor license.
And then we put in the, then we let them put in the enclosure so that when it's a little cool outside. And there are limits on that. I'm hoping in the winter time, you don't have as many problems because if I recall correctly, that was a seasonal issue.
Yeah, but the winner, the winner is when, we're not, we don't make as much money in the winter either. So, in the summer, I'm, our business is booming. I deserve to use his parking lot for us and no one else. And it doesn't work that way. I mean, even on a slow day to day, I worked lunch versus dinner. Within 15 minutes, I have pictures on my phone of three cars, one parked right in front of the sign, one parked in the middle. It happens all the time.
I work in a business that we have the same issue too. So, people don't pay attention. It's not him, it's his people. And you can't govern his people, unfortunately. And probably what you have to do is have someone out there for a while to stop people from doing it.
Okay, then, then you guys can pay for, pay for it then. You caused the problem, you pay for it.
Mark, is there something we can do, put, put together and with Harry? I know, Harry already knows, you know, we've had that problem down there. And I don't, we, we've gotta put some heads together here and, and get this straightened around somehow, one way or the other.
Well, I'll give the administration's a chance to see what they can come up with and...
And then have a meeting with all parties perhaps, just to see if you can come to just a nice general response. There's no, you know, the problem is parking and there isn't any.
Well, why can't you force the Woodpile to buy that lot?
You can't force someone to buy a lot any more than I can force you guys to sell him your lot. I mean, you can't force them to do that.
But he doesn't have, but, I mean, there's gotta be some kind of, yeah.
It would be hoof him to buy that lot. Now, just think what he could do if he had a place for people. He must be losing people too because, trust me, if I wanna, oh no, if I wanna go pick up food and I have to wiggle around cars to get into his place, I'm not going there.
Well, that's why they park in our parking lot.
Some of us are respectful and wouldn't park in your parking spot. Not everyone, of course, but there are. Who, who here wouldn't park in their parking lot?
I haven't.
I know Matt wouldn't.
No, I'm not saying the Clawson, but you're, I mean, you're, I've had every age group from youngest to somebody my father's age say things that you would not even believe.
No, I, I would believe it. And it's really unfortunate. And let's just let Mark take his, work his magic and get people together because it's gonna involve a sit-down and it's probably gonna involve several and, because there is no easy answer. So, I appreciate your coming here. I appreciate Howie championing you and your restaurant. And of course, we wanna support all of our businesses, especially the ones who are generous to our people.
And in respect to your, the food truck thing that you just stated tonight, which I did not, wasn't aware of. And that you're saying that this is gonna take effect as after July 4th. So, you're, what, what that means is that you have approved the food trucks in downtown?
In the parks, no. They've only been approved at the, at the city parks. That's the only place that they've been approved at this time.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, that's what, because I had went to that meeting also.
Yes, that's the only place.
And I would also, one, one last thing, if you don't mind. I did make people aware that the light above our, in front of our business is out. Then I was told that I was supposed to call the DPW, but if somebody could, it's been out for like a month and a half.
I took care of that the other day.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Howie.
Howie got a letter.
Good job, Howie.
For Mark, Mark did.
Okay, thank you.
I talked to Mark about it.
All right.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else for public discussion?
Anybody else?
Public discussion?
Yeah, mine are small issues compared to these others. But, I'm concerned about the island where Phillips and South Selfridge meet, how bad it is. And every time I talk to anybody in the DPW and the city, I get told, "It'll never happen in your lifetime" that that area's gonna be fixed. And I'm saying, "If they could grind this corner down here, why can't they bring that same machine up there and grind that intersection around that island and put blacktop on it and fix the problem?" I know it's not gonna solve all the problems with the base and all that, but it's sure gonna fix the problem that we're having now. I had to get, the truck came out today to put asphalt in it to repair it. And they were there probably a good hour trying to fix all the potholes. But, like I say, every time I talk to them, they say, "Not in your lifetime."
I'd say, this year, council approved much, I think it's $280,000 to fix the local roads. And I can tell you that I frequently drive at that intersection and it's a high priority for me. And so, we're looking at what can we do with the money that we have and essentially doing an à la carte method. And one other item that, we were able to do the 14-mile and Main Street intersection because of a grant. Unfortunately, we can't use grant money for local streets. You can only use them for 14-mile, Main Street, those major roads. So, any of those city streets have got to be completely funded by the citizens and our tax dollars. There's no, we can't get any money from anywhere else to fix them.
Yeah, I know, I know, that's all true. But, when they did it the last time, whoever the city manager was, or whoever got that road put in from Crooks all the way up to Shom and then down Phillips, that was funded by something and it wasn't by the city.
It was ITC. It was ITC because the business wanted to put underground lines in the city. And so, the city said, "We will let you put these in." And by, and the fact that they were putting those lines in, they had to rip up the roads, so we got the benefit of new roads. So, that's how that, that came about.
And they did a bad job because they didn't put in a good base. Anyway.
But, we are very committed to the whole infrastructure, absolutely.
We need to get it done in my lifetime. I'd like to see it done in my lifetime.
Mine too.
The other thing is, on that same corner, there was two trees that died two years ago. And the city has not put in replacement trees yet. We'd like to get them back in there because we always decorate that corner, that island. And we decorated it already for the fourth, but we're short two trees. And I got decorations for them.
You can put them on Darby in our little island. They would love to have them.
You take care of your own neighborhood, which they will. I think that's all I've got. I would like to say that I was under the impression that, whatever they call that barbecue place, that the lot next to them, originally, they wanted to buy it to put in additional parking. And I was told or heard that, and maybe not true, that the city would not allow them to rezone that into a parking area. Cause that was a residential house that was there before.
That was commercial property there. That residential house was commercial property. That was the heating and cooling place that was in there.
Whatever was there, it was, they were told they couldn't take the property. That'd be an ideal place for a city parking lot.
Yeah, we know that. Yeah, we know that.
Do what you do when you condemn something, condemn the lot and then take it over for nothing.
Tell Mr. Mahmood that.
Thank you very much. Anyone else for public discussion?
Just wanna remind everyone that the meeting is Monday next time, or if you wanted to remind everyone.
July 1st instead of...
July.
The 2nd, the 1st is Sunday?
I stand corrected. July 2nd will be our city council meeting to allow for a Clausen, Fourth of July traditions, planning for all involved. Now, public discussion is now closed. Thank you, everyone, for coming and have a great evening.
Madam Mayor, I move we adjourn the meeting.
Support.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Mayor Woolley?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullott?
Yes.